Welcome to regular session, uh, Mayor and Council meeting. Six P M. Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty-three, City Hall complex. Can you call this meeting to order? Can you please try to cut your leash? Councilwoman Montiel?
Plaids of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states. One nation, on a ground invisible, free and just for all.
No invocation, uh, no call to the public, I think?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Chief, you had a request?
Have a talk to the public?
Uh, geez, yes, sir. I do have a call to. There's a special proclamation. Uh, proclamation of the mayor of the city of Nogales declaring the fifty-fourth annual professional municipal clerks week April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three. The office of the professional municipal clerk at a time honored and vital part of a local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the profession professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professionalism link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerk have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartially rendering equal services to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center of functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I Jorge Maldonado, mayor of Nogales, Arizona, do proclaim that this week of April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three, as Professional Municipal Clerk Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Letitia Robinson, and all the professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their extraordinary dedication to the community they represent. Thank you, Letitia. Well deserved, Letitia, well deserved. Congratulations. City manager, go ahead.
Can we deviate from a regular agenda and skip to item number eight, orders? Uh, Mr. Hector Tapia, who's on Zoom or Hangouts right now, uh, has a commitment at seven o'clock, and we have some presentations, I just don't want to make him late.
Okay, I have no problem with that. We're good moving to section, uh, orders. Okay, we're gonna move to orders. Uh, item A, consideration and possible action of orders twenty twenty-three dash zero five dash zero twenty-four, an order of the city council of Nogales, Arizona, approving the appointment of community development director.
Second.
Any questions for? Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to say.
Mike?
I, uh, first, I want to, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Tapia for waiting on us, uh, till this meeting and gave me the opportunity to interview a couple of people that actually, well, had dealings and worked for him during the time he was here in Nogales. And I had nothing but great compliments and high praises, uh, for him, and they're glad that he's back to, to Nogales. And, uh, I just wanted to let him know that I really appreciate the time that he gave us, because it was kind of heartwarming to hear such, uh, great praises from one, uh, worker that worked there with him and said he, she'd come along and visit, Mrs. Rosario Trujillo. And, uh, also our former county supervisor and former city consultant, Mr. Cesar Parada, all gave, uh, great remarks about Mr. Tapia's performance and the kind of person he is. So, thank you, Mr. Tapia, for, for applying here in Nogales, and, and I believe that we'll probably have you all ready and, uh, approved tonight. So I'm just gonna say welcome aboard, and I hope the whole council feels the same way. Thank you.
Councilman Gravias.
I, I just want to get a little bit of clarification. Uh, last meeting, we were told that we had the authority to interview, uh, candidate for a director position. I've reviewed the city charter, and I can't find that. I think our authority is, is only to approve an appointment or not. And also, the memo that was provided by Mr. Machado states the same thing. So I'm just gonna get clarification. Isn't that an administrative duty if we go further into a personnel issue?
The, the, the appointment of, of, in accordance with the, with the charter, the appointment of department directors is done by, by this, the city manager. That's an administrative function, the interviews, uh, the, the job classifications, the negotiation for salaries, and et cetera. That's all administrative, okay? Then, once, once a, a candidate has been determined, then that candidate is then presented to, to the council for their approval and consent. Now, while individual members of the council can't, uh, can't participate in the interview process, it's gonna be clearly administrative, and according to the, to the charter, you don't, you have no administrative duties. What, uh, the, the, the accepted way to do that would be then, if it was the, the council's desire in, in the future, you set up an interview for the body as a whole, see? So then the whole body meets in executive session with a candidate, and then you do the, the interview as a whole, not individually. Does that clarify it?
It kind of does. I'm just stuck on the part of an interview process. If the charter states that all we are here to do is affirm or, or not, because all that process has been done by the city manager.
Okay, but it, it's an interview process, uh, by the body as a whole to approve or disapprove, okay? Not, not, you're not interviewing candidates for the position. You're just approving or not approving the candidate that is brought to you. And in the process, i- it would be not an interview, but, well, it would be an interview, but for that purpose only.
Thank you, appreciate that explanation. Now I understand it, okay.
Miss, thank you. Mr. Machado, can you explain a little bit about proposition four oh seven? Is that four seven, uh, or four eleven? The one that just passed in twenty twenty regarding this issue about council?
You mean the approval? The approval process? Okay. Prior to, to, to the, to the latest passage or amendment to the charter, uh, department heads were appointed by the director, by the city manager, and that was at his sole discretion, okay? And the department heads did not come before the council. Um, their, their appointment, their discipline, their, uh, anything in connection with them, their supervision, so on, uh, was done by the city manager as the chief administrator of the city. The, the, the amendment to the charter, uh, does not change the aspect of the department or the city manager choosing the department directors. However, that is now subject to the approval and consent of the city, of, of the city council. And in that connection, the removal or demotion of the, uh, of the director is also subject to the approval, um, of the, of the council as a whole. Other than that, Mr. Montiel, that nothing else has changed in terms of, of the supervision, um, who he answers to, um, et cetera?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I was gonna interject something, but I think, uh, Mr. Machado clarified, uh, the point pretty well. Thank you, Mr. Machado.
Thank you. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Tapia, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia, for being available.
Congratulations, welcome.
I'll see you on May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move to item five, communications, and, uh, A, presentation, uh, number one presentation by South thirty-two. I think we've got Mr. Pat Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate the time to be able to share an update on this project with you. Um, we've not had the opportunity to present what we're doing with the Hermosa project publicly in this forum before, so, uh, just want to, uh, provide the community and the council an update on, on where the Hermosa project's at. So first of all, just to give people an overview of, of what this project is, this is a critical minerals, uh, mine development located in the Patagonia Mountains, uh, to the east of here. Uh, it's the only project advancing in the United States that would produce two U.S. government federally listed critical minerals, those being zinc and manganese. Uh, critical minerals are resources that the U.S. has increasing need for national security reasons, where we don't have domestic supply today, um, where we're reliant on foreign sources, primarily Chinese sources. Uh, manganese is primarily in lithium ion batteries, so the, the push to put electric vehicles on the road is driving substantial increase for manganese. Zinc is the galvanized steel, so the build out of renewables, and then we'll also produce silver and lead as, as byproducts, and the silver is mainly for photovoltaic solar cells. Um, so all of these minerals are produced to, uh, support the United States in onshoring domestic supply of resources needed to address climate change. Uh, it's an extremely unique project in that sense. Um, just to give everybody an idea, we are doing some things very differently in the way in which we're planning, uh, this mine development operation, uh, in three areas, all aimed at addressing the sustainability concerns that you typically see with large mining operations. In the first instance, it's an extremely small footprint operation. We've designed an underground mining method where we can mine all of these resources for less than six hundred acres. To put that into context, a typical large copper mine is eight to ten thousand acres, so it's a ninety-five percent reduction in the impacts on surface environmental resources. Um, we also designing it as the first carbon neutral mining operation in the world, because these resources are needed to address climate change. We believe they should be produced in a way that's climate friendly. We'll use all battery electric equipment, no diesel equipment, both underground and on the surface, um, and then renewable energy to power the mine. We're also designing it to, uh, be a low water use intense mine. Uh, the primary way in which we're doing that is we've built the first, uh, dry stack tailings facility, so tailings is the waste that comes from processing the, the mineral resources. Uh, it gets stored in a surface facility. We reuse and recycle all the water that comes out of that. So low water use, low, low carbon footprint, and small surface footprint. Uh, this is a picture that tells the story, really, about why this project is so important. South thirty-two is the largest producer of manganese in the world, but we've not mined manganese in the United States in more than fifty years, since the early seventies. The left picture shows where it's mined, the right picture shows where it's processed into a final product. We are one hundred percent reliant on Chinese supply for the manganese in every battery that's in your phone, your computer, and more importantly, the ten million electric vehicles that our country wants to put on the road in the next seven to eight years. The main importance of this project is to create not only a, an American local domestic supply chain for this raw material, so the batteries can be produced in the United States rather than in China, but to do it employing people here in Santa Cruz County. As a result of this picture, the U.S. government declared, uh, President Biden declared the Defense Production Act, uh, last March, which was an executive order to stimulate the production of battery metals in the United States. Uh, this is the only deposit of manganese in the United States, so if we're gonna have a domestic supply, it will have to come from Santa Cruz County here in Hermosa. To give you an idea of the scale of, of the operation, uh, we've had Ernst &amp; Young, a large accounting firm, help us with an economic impact study on what it does for Santa Cruz County and the state. Uh, the charts you see there gives you an idea on jobs, economic output, labor income. A few things I'd like to highlight, um, it is, uh, over twenty-four hundred jobs. If you look at direct employment to South thirty-two, plus contractors, vendors, suppliers, that's equaled about twelve percent of the current employment in the county. Uh, it generates on an annual basis almost two hundred million dollars in new disposable income in the county. Uh, so that's income in people's pockets that doesn't exist today. Uh, it grows the county gross domestic product by about five hundred million a year and increases the total economic output in the county by about a billion dollars a year. To put that into context, that's about a third of the current economy of Santa Cruz County. So it is a, a, a pretty significant, uh, shift from a socio-economic standpoint. The other really important part is it more than doubles the property tax revenue in the county, which goes to schools and county services. We're moving forward. I'll provide an update on where the project's at on the next slide, but later this year, we're gonna be moving forward with a very significant local workforce development program. Obviously, uh, we'll employ eight to nine hundred people in the county directly with South thirty-two. Uh, our aim is to maximize the number of those people that take those jobs to be current residents of Santa Cruz County. To do that, we have to train a workforce, we have to put in a big effort to grow the skills we need locally, so we will be commencing that process later in the year. We are prioritizing local hiring. We believe long term, this workforce can be greater than eighty percent people that live in the county today, uh, and we're, we're, we're planning for that, looking at how we capitalize on transferable skills that exist in the county today. But I think importantly, uh, we already, for the last three years, have been partnering with the local Santa Cruz County schools on STEM programs, robotics programs, tecnologías. This will be a very advanced mine. Uh, you'll be able to operate most of the underground mine from a remote operating center from the surface somewhere distant to the mine, so we need STEM skills, we need, uh, lots of professional engineering and science disciplines, and we want to start to grow those in the local schools. The, the big part of it will be partnering with community colleges and some of the other stakeholders in the county that do trades training. Um, we, we've got to train up to five to six hundred operator and maintainer type positions over the next few years. So we will be putting together a countywide task force to work on this. The other thing we want to do in the, in the, the course of setting up programs to create skills and train a workforce for our needs is think about the broader needs of the county, so other industries, other economic development initiatives, what skills they may have while we're setting these programs up, uh, to meet the needs of this project. Uh, we should make sure we meet the needs of the broader community and other industries that need skills in the county, and we're committed to do that. Uh, last slide, this is where we're up to, uh, on the manganese development. Um, we have signed our first memorandum of understanding with a, a domestic company that is planning to manufacture electric vehicle batteries in the United States. That MOU lays out a path of working together towards a, a binding agreement for the supply of manganese. We are working to try to put three or four more of those in place in the next year. Um, we have a pilot plant up and running where we actually are producing small quantities of battery grade manganese from the mineral resource, uh, the sampling of the mineral resource that we've done. That's the first battery grade manganese produced outside of China, um, and we're starting to produce small quantities to supply to customers. Later this year, we'll begin the development of a decline, which is really just an angled tunnel to allow us to actually tunnel down, uh, to access the manganese deposit underground so we can start development and taking a larger sample to work with customers, uh, to qualify the product. Um, we are gonna begin sinking shafts to the zinc resource later, uh, later next week, actually. We're breaking ground on the shaft sinking, so we'll be, uh, developing two twenty-five foot diameter, twenty-eight hundred feet deep shafts to actually access the zinc resource and begin the underground development. And then we've been building a new water treatment plant, which you see in the photo here, for the last year. We will start commissioning that in about five weeks. We've spent about three hundred and fifty million on construction in the last twelve months on the site. Um, we are working to improve Harsaw Road, some of the roads in the region, uh, and starting to build a, a bypass road around the town of Patagonia to make sure our traffic doesn't go through town. We also will be making a final decision to move forward on full-scale construction later this year. Um, and at peak, we're looking at about nine hundred jobs during the construction period on site. If you want more information, uh, we have a dedicated website for the project, south32hermosa.com. We are on social media now, have a Facebook page. We've just launched a LinkedIn and Twitter page dedicated to the project as well, so any of those will give you, uh, pretty frequent updates. We have a newsletter that, uh, that goes out in hard copy, I think, to everyone in the county now, uh, but if you want it electronically, you can text Hermosa to this number, um, and get that newsletter, that quarterly newsletter, uh, delivered electronically. And then we have a couple of email addresses, uh, one for any questions you might have, but also a website for careers and jobs as we start to ramp up employment. That's the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions if there's time for that.
Anybody have any questions?
When do you, um, expect to, uh, start getting any silver and any other? What's, what's the timeline on that?
Yeah, so the first, uh, so if we commence construction later this year, the first, uh, production of, uh, the zinc, lead, and silver resource happens in, uh, early twenty twenty-seven, so we're about four years away. So it's a three-plus-year construction period. Uh, we are working with the federal government through that Defense Production Act that President Biden invoked on how we accelerate the first production of the manganese. The battery production facilities are gonna come online sooner than that, so both the U.S. government and the E.V. companies, the car companies, uh, want battery raw materials sooner, so we're looking at ways we can accelerate that either to late twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six.
Any other questions? Mr. Pat, anything we could do, anything we could help, uh, you know, battery, you know, you got the manganese, uh, I know Mexico has the, uh, lithium, so whatever we could help, uh, as a city, um, you know, let's talk later, talk about, uh, housing, you know, if you're gonna bring, obviously, some, some professional, um, uh, workers, uh, outside of, of the county, anything, let's talk about, see how we could all get together and, and, maybe do some housing, uh, program with you guys. Uh, whatever we can help, I think, uh, the city is open to, to, uh, help the mine and whatever we can. I think we, you know, um, even with the other projects, uh, the battery facilities or, uh, anything with the cars that we could do, uh, you know, please feel free to, uh, reach my, our office and, and the city. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, uh, Councilman Doyle?
I was just wondering, uh, I know you have to, uh, up there for careers, but since I see so many young, young persons here that might, some might be graduating in the next couple of years, and is there any way that some that might be interested, uh, would they get the direction there, uh, to prepare themselves maybe, uh, for the jobs at hand?
Yeah, so, so there are some materials there. Those are current roles, if you go to that website, but we, we are, through this workforce development task force, I think we will reach out to all the schools and make sure that there is communication on, on two things, immediate career opportunities, but also these training programs. So as we get the, the trades training and the operator training programs set up, um, we will make sure that, uh, we're well-integrated with the local schools so that, uh, you know, kids understand the opportunities they have if they want to go to the trade route. Um, we will continue to bolster the STEM programs. Uh, we, we will employ every kind of engineer you can imagine, mining engineers, electrical, mechanical, geotechnical, uh, a number of the science professions, geochemists, geologists. And so to grow those skills and draw local workforce in those areas, we've got to start now in the middle schools and high schools, um, and we have a plan for that. So this, this should be all well-integrated with the local schools so that students understand whether they go, you know, STEM or professional path or operator trades path, what the opportunities and, and training programs are.
Thank you very much, and I, I hope you all took, uh, it might have an interest, uh, there's opportunity at the door. Time to prepare yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All kids, big opportunities, uh, hope, hope we could, uh, you know, work together with the mine and, and, uh, you know, can get better and easier than that. You know, I know electronics is the, the thing that all the kids have right now, so, uh, this is something that the mine will need in, uh, different levels. Thank you, sir. Item number two, recognizing Steve Meyer and Gabriel Galindo for their outstanding community service. Councilwoman Montiel.
Yeah, it's my honor. Um, if Steve can come up and Gabriel, please, to the podium. I'll start off with Steve. You can, you can do it. I have a little. Thank you, both of you. Um, Steve, for those of you that don't know Steve, and most of you do know Steve, who doesn't know Steve in Santa Cruz County, in Arizona, in fact? So Steve was born and raised in Nogales, here behind City Hall, Via Coronado, and on a personal note, Steve was the inspiration for my older brother, my nephews Aaron and Bobby, in receiving their Eagle Scout Medal. So on behalf of our family, thank you so much, Steve. Steve has been involved with Boy Scouts as a scout himself for fifty-eight years and as a scout master for thirty-five years. He has been participating in Memorial Day celebrations for thirty-four years. Your positive influence, Steve, and unconditional support towards the scouts is ideal and very much appreciated by hundreds and thousands of parents, scouts, and community residents. You make our community great, and the Triple Nickel Scout Troop, five-five-five, an awesome place, is, is an awesome place to be a part of. We applaud you for your contributions to the scouting movement. On behalf of Mayor Maldonado and the council, we present you with a certificate of recognition,
In recognition of your outstanding dedication and continued commitment to volunteering time and effort to the city of Nogales community, thank you for being, for bettering the lives of our youth. Steve, thank you for all you do.
Aw, and you should be proud. Gabriel Galindo, um, you have been, he, you were also born and raised here in Nogales, up on Alice Street, and, um, I wanted it on behalf of the mayor and, and the council. You've been, you've been playing the bugler since nineteen ninety-one, um, thirty-two years playing tabs on. You've been, you've been playing the bugler since 1991, 32 years playing taps on Memorial Day. Also, you play taps for the veterans in funerals and all sorts of other activities. And also on the, on behalf of the American Legion and the Honor Guard Post 23. I know if you've missed one day out of those 32 years. And if you can tell us yourself why you missed that day, and also tell us a little quick story that you told Mrs. Barada the other day. I thought that was very inspirational, if you could just share that with us.
Indeed, so, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name again, Gabriel Galindo, and I'm super honored to be here. The way my journey started by playing taps is very interesting. So that was 1991. So that was about two and a half, three months after the premature death of my father, Gonzalo Galindo, at the ripe old age of 39. So it was a Saturday. My grandfather, Robert Mendez, called me to his house, my next-door neighbor. And he gave me a tape, yeah, a tape, guys do, guys know what a tape is? Okay. A cassette, verdad? And he said, here, listen to this, learn this, you're going to play it on Monday in Memorial Day. Okay, so I put on my tape player, yeah, and I recognized it right away. And I'm like, no, I don't want to do this. He said, I'm not asking you. This is my wish for you as your grandfather. Okay, cool, so I did, I learned it, played it in 1991, and I've been doing it ever since. The only time I missed it was in 2019 because I had the honor, pleasure, and privilege of being nominated and won for Employee of the Year for my employer at that organization. So I went to a national conference in Austin, Texas, but I severely missed that day. But again, I have not missed one day. It definitely is an honor, pleasure, and privilege to be able to do that, to be able to share that with Troop 555. Not only because it's, it's a great part of our community, but because our community is very unique, it's one of a kind, and it's beautiful to see. And just wanted to share something that has nothing but has everything to do with exactly how and why I do this. I'm an avid bowler myself, I've been bowling for quite some time, I have 18 perfect games. I absolutely love it. And I recently went to a national tournament where I had a team from Phoenix, Arizona, on one side, and a team from Michigan on the other side. And they said, oh, Nogales, where's that? And someone said, oh, I know where that is. And then they started spewing out these negative things at what a lot of folks think of Nogales. And I said, no, actually, Nogales, Arizona. The place where we have one of the best educational systems, with the top, if not one of the top, if not the top, high school graduation rate. The place where 60 to 80% of your produce crosses the international border. The city and county with perhaps the safest, if not the safest, county and city per capita. Thank you, Law Enforcement Agency. And the place, I mentioned this, the place where I've been playing taps since 1991, making sure that all our community members know and understand that this is one of the most beautiful places here. My father, before he passed away, he said, Nogales is the most beautiful, best place in the entire world. Why? Because that's why God put us here. And that's why I continue doing what I'm doing. And it's an honor and a pleasure and a privilege to be able to be here with you today.
Thank you for sharing your story.
Gabriel Galindo, in recognition of your outstanding dedication and continued commitment to volunteering in our community, your contribution in our community is highly valued. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Gabriel, I appreciate it.
Steve and Gabriel, you know, on behalf of the city, what you teach all these young gentlemen out in the community, you know, those words that you just said, Gabriel, really, really mentions to everybody what, what this community is about. You know, this community is, you know, I've always said it, you know, I had a tournament in baseball one time coming down, just from Arizona. They thought we needed passports and all that. And, you know, thank you for spreading the word on our great community that we have. And it's all to the public, all to the community, how we engage. When the timing, you know, tough gets tough, we all stick in together. But thank you, Steve and Gabriel, for everything you do. Mr. Work, Mike?
I'm sorry, I'd like to ask Steve and Gabriel, if they could get together and some of their leaders and their staff that, that give such success to the work you do, maybe get together so they can all take a picture of these people that worked so hard to make it a success.
I will, I'd like to mention one thing.
Go ahead, Steve. We want everyone to hear you.
I, I don't shine unless my whole group shines, and, and I got some of the best leaders, best volunteers, and, and I'd say this, I'd say the whole United States. We've got an excellent troop here. And our program, I think, is needed more now than any other time in, in history. And yes, I'd like to call my leaders up here and join me in this. Thank you.
Without the dedication of all these adults and who are involved in the program, we wouldn't be as we are, we do have one of the most polite troops in the whole United States.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, leaders.
Thank you. Councilwoman Montiel, that was a great, great presentation. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it upon us. Next item, being general proclamation Mental Health Month. Vice Mayor, would you please read it for me? Thank you, 555. Everybody, thank you.
Good evening. Proclamation for Mental Health Month. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental illness affect almost every family in America, and whereas people with mental illness recover if given the necessary services and support their communities. And whereas people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and our communities. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year. And whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the effective way to reproduce, I'm sorry, reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illnesses. Now therefore, I, Jorge Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Month. I also call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate, accessible services for all people with mental, mental illnesses.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item C, events. Number one, update on Natural Recreation, Recreation Week. Director Travers?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I put on, on your desks areas, our schedule, the official agenda out of the Consulado's office. We are collaborating with the Mexican consulate, the American consulate, and our sister city, the Ayuntamiento de Nogales Sonora, on this event, well, various events throughout the week. The week does begin on May 15 with a couple of events, a ride, a couple of different things. I don't want to go too far into detail because that day as well, Mayor will be having a press conference inviting the entire community to these events. So we'll have a variety of events on this side of the border, as well as in Nogales Sonora, throughout the week, ending with a long day on, on Saturday, the 20th, hosted here at the Recreation Center with officials coming down from Mexico City as well to join us for that day. So it's a great highlight for our community. This happens in all border towns across the Southwest. And this, I think, this is the first time I'm involved in this event. I know they did have it last year, but they did not incorporate into, into our city. So this year we're having multiple events here as well.
There's how, how many press conferences?
There's, there's one tomorrow, or, yeah, no, tomorrow, tomorrow's Wednesday. Thursday, in Nogales Sonora with Mayor Gim, and the governor will be coming down to join him. And our mayor will join him as well. And then we'll have another one on the 15th here that Mayor Maldonado will host.
The one on Thursday?
Yes.
Did they confirm time?
They confirmed noon. I don't know if the Consulado has changed it, they haven't been, they moved it to 5:00 PM. Wonderful. I'll put that on my calendar as well.
5:00 PM.
That's good for your plans as well.
Yeah, he was in my office today.
Good.
So it's been confirmed, and that's going to be at the Ayuntamiento de Nogales Sonora.
Correct.
5:00 PM. You know, council, you know, let's see if we could be there and, and support this program. It's, you know, sports week, basically. Hopefully, we, we get good crowds in every gate.
Exactly.
Okay, and any questions? Mr. Travers, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Item D, reports, financial monthly report. March 2023 financial report, FY 2022-23.
You all have a copy in front of you. So through March of this year, we should be at about 75% when it comes to our overall budget. If you take a look at Table A, that is our general fund. And for revenues, we have brought in $25,270,825, which is 92% of our overall budget. And expenditure-wise, out has gone $20,334,628, which is 57%. You'll also notice on Table A, our shared revenue. We are at $6,840,461, which is 75%. If you move on to Table B, that is our local sales tax. In March, we collected $1,110,166. That is $177,303 more than March of last year. And we are currently $2240,053 overall from this point, this year to last year. If you move on to Table C, this is the general fund accounts broken out. And again, it's the $20,334,628 gone out. And we are getting fewer little highlighted departments, so we're getting closer to our budget. If you move on to Table D, that is our HERF and our overweight fees. We have collected $1,831,877 in HERF, and we've collected $223,790, I'm sorry, yes, $734 for overweight fees. And for expenditures, we have paid out in HERF $2,672,114. And for overweight fees, it's $2,139,070. If you move on to Table E, it's our sewer fund. For the sewer fund, we have collected $2,157,326, and we have expended out $1,444,843. If you move on to Table F, that's our water fund. We have collected $2,714,326, and we have expended out $4,338,072. And if you move on to Table G, it's our sanitation. We have collected $2,211,012, and we have paid out $2,64,959. Are there any questions on that section of the report? Okay.
Can you explain the, what was that big cost on, on water utility? Something we paid back in '22?
Well, we pay the WIFA loan, like July 1 of every year. So for sewer and water, you'll see the huge payment made right at the beginning. So then it kind of throws it off for the rest of the year. But it's always a big one in July. And that's, that's the biggest one for water.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Now if you'll move on to the Water and Sewer Delinquent Report. We have currently 6,167 active utility accounts. We have 418 delinquent accounts that are on contract. That totals $110,859.01. The total has decreased $3,093.06 from last month. Increased two accounts, but they were very small. In addition, we have 130 delinquent accounts that are sewer or sanitation only. And that total is $283,503.43. And those are the ones that we can't just go and shut off. If you look at the second page, the top is the businesses that we keep watching. You will notice a, a new business on there. They're not on there for a contract, but they're on there. We finalized the account, and we're kind of waiting for them to come back in and get started again. For employee payouts, we had four employee payouts in April. For police, for two employees, we paid out $21,038, 30, yes, $30,034. For police, for two employees, we paid out $21,038, 30, yes, $38.56 in sick and vacation time. For wastewater sewer, we had one employee that paid out $5,815.87. And for streets, we had one payout of $1,738.52. Then finally, for the fuel report, through April, we have paid out $482,675.18 compared to last year at this time of $356,817. So we're $125,864.41 over last year at this point for gasoline. Are there any questions on that part?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
On the fuel report, is that, that amount, $125,000 that we're over from last year, is that because of the gas price, or is that because we're using more?
No. Our overall usage has not changed very much at all. It's all the price, and we see it just keeps going up every time we put that PO in, it hurts.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Gracias.
On the sewer-only accounts, I know we have started doing filings on delinquent accounts, but I think I heard it was only on the larger accounts. I see that there's over a quarter of a million dollars outstanding, and I don't know if it's feasible to go after the smaller ones too, because eventually they're going to just keep growing, and we can't shut them off. But if we put a lien now, it'll be there in case the future they want to sell or do whatever. But I think it's a good idea to explore, continue with the smaller accounts.
We're a step ahead of you. We're already working on forming, of creating the necessary forms to create liens on those properties, and then ramp up our collection efforts. We're also doing business licenses at this time, so we're kind of swamped, but we're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Machal. Anything else? Dean, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We may move to number seven, discussion items. A, Fourth of July celebration details, time, place, location. Councilwoman Montiel.
Just wanted to give the public and the council an update. We haven't finalized, along with, and welcome to Get Up, Renee, because you are, of course, have actually put all this together, which I'm very grateful. So just so the public can know, they can start, they've been asking me questions, I know they're probably asking you, so Fourth of July is obviously is on a Tuesday. The parade begins at 10:00 AM, and the route is yet to be determined, right, Chief, I mean, Manager?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, of course, the celebration is at Fletcher Park from 4:00 to 11:00. And you want to tell them a little bit about if they're interested in the parade?
Well, we'll have applications as soon as we decide on a route. We'll go ahead and post those applications. And then we'll open for vendors on May 15 for registration for vendors. They'll have to come to the Recreation Center first to pick, to fill out the application, and then they'll go to the Health Department if they are selling food.
Okay, great. And also, we're informing the public through social media and on the city website and through Nogales International, and I think Maxi Matu, right? I think we decided to do that too. So the public will be well informed of the details of the Fourth of July celebration. That's about it. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving to ordinance. Number one, consideration and possible action of ordinance 02, 023-05-002, an ordinance of the city of Nogales amending ordinance number 18-D1-22-184 by amending the existing curfew ordinance to grant the director flexibility in operating parks and recreation facilities, cruise, curfew keeping, curfew, and to all, to include all parks obtaining written permission close scene of areas of parks, recreation areas, enforcement, and penalties.
Just for the record, I want to make sure this is, this is the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments? Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
And since we have all unanimous consent, if the council would like to waive the second reading, doesn't have to come back. So.
Okay, all in favor? All right, all opposed? Motion passes.
And just so.
Everybody know.
I just wanted to ask to waive the second reading, just so you'll know why. If an ordinance passed in the usual course of events does not come, does not become effective until 30 days, but if you waive the second reading, then it becomes effective immediately.
Thank you. Move to item number 10, mayors and council reports on current events. Start with Mr. Buenias.
I was, I visited last month, the, some of the candidates for the firefighters, where they had candidates from Tubac, Patagonia, City of Nogales. So I was very impressed with what they're doing. I really liked that new program that we started, I think, last year. And so we're looking forward to having a lot of, a lot of graduating, a big graduating class, even though all of them are not from Nogales, but I think that program that we started is doing very well.
Thank you. Councilman Doyle.
Thank you. Yes, I also attended the local police academy graduation that the chief and acting city manager had here on the council chambers, and I was very impressed with, well, as many candidates that you had, and how they seem to now connect a little more with the efforts of our city and the community, especially the police department and law enforcement agencies that also kind of were involved in the process of helping out on bringing more information to these candidates. So, but gee, if I had the time, I think I would, I would join that, one of those sessions. But anyway, you're doing a great job, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Menendez.
Well, we're ready for the Fiesta de Mayo event Saturday. You're all invited. Thank you, Renee, for all your work. I mean, we're done. We have 20 vendors, let's see, we have 21 vendors. They're still calling, but I don't, we don't have enough space now. Oops, too late. Yep, that's all.
That means we're ready for Saturday.
Yes.
Thank you, good job. Councilman Gracias.
Just a reminder of the upcoming graduations and a whole bunch of festivities coming up. Just want to make sure we're all aware of, and we all take our time to attend some of these events. I think the community would appreciate seeing us off there. That's all I got.
Councilwoman Montiel.
Not, not, there's too many. I'm just really happy with the community. There's so many things going out there. I just want to give a shout out to the artists downtown, Evan Corey, for the grand opening of the Whitner Museum. It was amazing on Saturday. So I am so happy about the work that these artists are doing. They started with La Linea, and they just keep going, and they don't stop, including the Hilltop. It's amazing. We should be very proud of this group of people that are getting downtown going. Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, three weeks ago, Councilman Doyle and myself received like 40 students from ASU, and we welcomed them to Nogales, and then we walked them up to Porta di Concini, and then we walked across the line to the, to an art museum. And then they took off on Cayo Bragon for, you know, a one-time adventure in Mexico, and then they came back and they went to La Linea Art Studios. And that was pretty interesting. The people were really amazed, and Mr. Councilman Doyle gave them a little bit of history of Nogales and how safe Nogales is, and it's not like the people up north think it is a very hostile city. Everything went really good. Then I had the honor of going to Tucson to see the mayor get a recognition, along with other very important people in the state. Mr. Machal was there, Lisa was there, Councilwoman Montiel was there, and myself. And it was very, very interesting, and it was very nice that we had somebody from our community representing our city. And then I also attended the police academy that Councilman Doyle talked about, and that's good. I'm glad that the residents of Nogales are being involved with the city, you know, in projects like this, you know, it makes us look a little bit better, you know, that we're working with the community, and we're not shutting them out. So it was very good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, with me, it was very busy, but we did the ribbon cutting down at the Port Authorities, which is going to be a big access for the produce industry, and it's going to hopefully keep these overweight trucks coming into our port and to our businesses here in Nogales, giving them more options of different items to handle in the produce industry. Then I attended some kids from ASU that came from Cronkite School, Department of, what was it, Journalism? And we met almost two hours down at Sula's Restaurant. It was, you know, again, it is very exciting to get people, you know, they had two groups, half from the US and half from Mexico, and it's very exciting to get these type of venues together when, you know, some hadn't, had never stepped into a border community, either US or Mexico, and they realize there's, we're all humans, and we're all, you know, just as normal as they are, wanting to open the doors and welcome to me, welcome them into our city, to our country with no problems at all. They were very, they walked down to the border, they had never been there, some had never been there, even from the people from Mexico, and they were very surprised at, as to how everything was and how, you know, we expressed, Jaime was there, Liz Ramírez was there, and it was very amazing to have these journalists see our city as a, you know, a very safe city, and they all said they would be willing to come back. Then, you know, we're up at some ADQ meetings up in Phoenix, worked a lot on getting our IOI settlement. Hopefully, it'll happen soon. I know that, you know, the CPR course was done back in, in the end of March, and I think that that's continuing. We had the Mingus Festival, which was great to celebrate here in our city. We had some meetings, actually a summit down last Monday with the mayors from Douglas, our Nogales Sonora. We had the Saguarita Mayor, Tucson Mayor, and then we had Wyman's Mayor, Rocky Point Mayor, and one more, Nogales Sonora Mayor. And then we had the both governors, Durazo and Hobbs. And it was, one thing, you know, I guess I beat everybody, but they said, what would, what would you do, how, what you going to take out of this meeting? And main thing is, continue the working relationship with everybody and be transparent and talk to everybody. I asked everybody, you know, we're going to try to switch it. It was, it happened in Tucson, was sponsored by Tucson Chamber, try to bring it here to Nogales, and that way, you know, we'll have another one in Yuma. But I think just the working relationship and talking with everybody is what excited everybody, that, you know, you know, fortunately, we have one of the best, or the best port of entry for commercial, you know, hopefully, we could get like that on the residential and regular vehicles. But today, I got bombarded with calls from this Title 42. And if anybody asks you, matter of fact, reporters came to my office, the community does not know what Title 42 is, you know, and I think it's something that we don't feel because experts have said, you know, we don't have a federal courthouse here, so they, you know, they can't, they're going to give them a court hearing up in Tucson or somewhere, somewhere else. Fortunately, we don't see that because they can't stay here. But if we get abundance, they will stay here. I talked to Border Patrol today, and they don't see that they're getting the big rush like everybody thinks. Hopefully, it happens like last time that they put the trailers and all that, that we didn't see nothing. And that's my main concern, you know? Hopefully, we don't get the border crossing delayed with trailers and getting deconcini from six lanes to two lanes, you know, all that. That's, that I hope will not happen because that always decreases our commercial impact in our city. So let's, you know, keep on working together and get everything done. And one thing I want to do is, not Chief, but City Manager, welcome. Welcome to our first meeting, and thank you for, you know, in three days or two days, I've seen you very hard at work already, and, you know, keep on spreading the good faith. Thank you. Couple of words?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a very busy, even though I wasn't, my first day, I didn't start till yesterday, but I had a very busy week and a half, extremely busy, actually. After 39 years, I'm looking at the council at a different point of view here, so it's kind of, it's kind of neat up here. But anyways, I'm honored to be here. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your trust. I can tell you that I'm very passionate about my community. I'm passionate about my, my city, and it's going to reflect in my work ethic and in my work product. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Council, I give you basically the, the things we get going on in May, a little bit, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. So, you know, there's, anything you guys have or anything, throw it out, out there, you know, send it to me, Judy, and she could deliver it to the rest of the council, but let's, let's keep on doing the great job you guys are doing, you know, let's keep on staying active, let's keep on making presence, and, you know, just, I think we're heading in a great direction, and let's keep on doing it. Anybody have any future agenda items? Councilman Doyle.
Yes, I'm kind of noticing that the gas prices have been going up considerably because under my administration, I guess we used to get the gallon about 75 cents a gallon here in the city, and now we're way up there. And I want to kind of review and discuss all employee vehicles that are being taken home at this time, you know, with the high gas prices, and maybe we can, you know, take it from there. We have to put some restrictions or something because of the. We have to put some restrictions or something because of the higher cost. That's one. Discuss also, and, and I was interested on, on this, that they're putting liens on the homes and it would be undiscussed and review on how sewer charges and fees are being charged and how those liens are going, you know, exactly how they work, especially when people are renting certain homes and who gets the lien? The homeowner. So how effective is that? I don't know. But I'd like to put that and discuss it and review and see if we can come up with something that's, well, an improvement on, on the way things are, are being done right now. Because I know that sewer fees are based on water usage and there's sections out there that we, we don't, we don't provide the water service. So, and they don't provide, those companies don't provide us the information on how much water usage is. So I'd like to put that in, on also. And then last, but not least, I haven't gotten, I'm, I'm kind of a little in the dark. I'm a veteran. I don't know how many veterans we have. I know Hector's a veteran here. But we've always supported our local veterans, especially during Memorial Day activities and Veterans Day activities. And this year, we, seems like either the, the funds were cut. And I'd like to put that to see who can explain to us what happened. And are we going to continue supporting our veterans or not? That's what I'd like to put on.
Okay, well, make sure we got it. I know, I could tell you, no funds were reduced. So, but we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for next month, or actually this month's May sixteenth meeting, so we could discuss that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any agenda items? No? Okay, let the, I'll email you mine, but, you know, makes, basically again, it's, we need, you know, the other thing we forgot is the chair park was, we did the, the ribbon cutting and ground.
May ninth, your city county meeting?
May ninth? Sixteenth?
Going to sixteenth?
Oh, that, yes, thank you for reminding me that, John. May ninth, when, May ninth, we, county came back and, and gave us a schedule for May ninth. We're going to have a city county meeting just to talk about, you know, the, what we mentioned on working together and bringing in ideas and all that. I threw, you know, different items, you know, parks, basically it was parks, you know, community development, paving, what else, Johnny? You know, where we do the library, we do the animal shelter. We do the fire district and stuff like that. So think about, you know, John, would they be sending an agenda on it?
We'll have to work on a joint agenda, Mr. Mayor. We'll get that out before. I think they're looking at something like ten o'clock.
Ten?
Here it is. Discussions that I put, told them that I want to talk to us. One, the parks, the paving, May ninth. Parks, paving, development, businesses, blood control, the health department and, and Justice of Peace or Courts. Those are items that I threw out, wanting to discuss with them. So if you guys have anything else, throw it at us so we could give them, to them, you know, the earlier the better. So, so we could plan out that, that meeting. Yes, ma'am?
Just to clarify, it's May the ninth?
May ninth.
It's May the ninth.
Do you have a location?
Up there at the county. Anything else? That's it? And move to adjourn this meeting? All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned.